Since it's the first meeting of the year, we'll have a reorganization meeting. Then we'll follow that with the regular MSD Board meeting. To join me, we'll begin by Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone. There's no revisions to the agenda for the reorganization meeting, so we'll begin with Josh giving oath of office to the VIPs.
Thank you. And in the past, we've just kind of done it right up here, right? Okay. All right. The first matter of business is for each of our board members, both our new board member and re-elected board member, take their oath of office. Matt, would you like to go first?
Yeah, can I do it right here?
You really can, yeah. Would you raise your right hand, please? I state your name.
I, Matt Briskel.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana?
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Indiana?
And the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute the duties?
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of my office?
Of my office.
As a member of this governing body?
As a member of this governing body.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Our signature. Mr. Jeff Porter.
Good. Yes. Thank you. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jeff Porter.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana?
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the State of Indiana.
And the State of Indiana. I will faithfully execute the duties?
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of my office?
Of my office.
As a member of this governing body?
As a member of this governing body.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yes, welcome, Matt and Jeff. Looking forward to working with you next year. We'll move on to the election of officers, beginning with the election of President.
I would like to nominate Kevin Bowman for President.
One second. Any others? No. Home favor, say aye. Any opposition? No, I got to just go. Which one, Vice President, your nomination?
I'd nominate Matt Briskel for President.
There are seconds.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Secretary, any nomination for that?
Let me nominate Christian Rusing.
Everyone in favor?
Yep.
Item four would be nomination of Liaison to ISBA, that's the Indiana State Board of Education.
Since Scott's not here. Nominate Scott.
Everyone in favor? Two second to that. Now it's just getting him there. All right, Representatives of the Heartland Board of Managers.
I nominate Matt Briskel for that, please.
Second.
I totally second that, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, we'll move on to the items in business of appointments of attorney and the trainer.
I recommend that we approve the law Office of Downs, Tandy, and Latreniu as attorneys at a rate of $200 per.
Let's find you, Josh. Okay. Motion for the?
I'm going to. I'm going.
Yeah, second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
I'll stay.
All right, we have appointment of Corporation Treasurer, which is currently Chris, and Deputy Treasurer, which is Laura, correct?
Correct. So I recommend appoint Dr. Chris Kuhn as Corporation Treasurer, and also recommend Laura Bear as Deputy Treasurer, and at the current bond of $200,000 to be continued for each elementary bookkeepers at $10,000 and high school bookkeepers at $20,000, as per Indiana Code 20-41-1-6.
Everyone in favor?
Yes.
Establishment salary of board members. Explain that, Mike, maybe for Jeff.
Yep, so the maximum for just the salary is $2,000, so the current salary of board members is $2,000, with a Heartland person representative receiving an additional $25 per meeting, not to exceed 12 meetings. The maximum salary cannot exceed the $2,000. So I recommend that, if that is favorable to anyone here. So.
Sorry.
Do you want me to vote, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Mileage, establishment of mileage?
I recommend the mileage rate for all school employees be the same as the amount in the current teacher master contract, which is 44 cents per mile.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Item six, what scholarship, $500 for each, $500 for each school, Northwood, Pin South for each. Discussion on that, and have we done that in the past?
You want to explain to Jeff what we do on that?
So basically, this actually started in 1994, so the board had donated part of their salary for that, so there could be actually those scholarships, and then the guidance counselors go ahead and put that out to the seniors, they complete them, and then the board actually gets together and they will choose the recipient of those applications.
And we'll take that out of your check, like the last couple of months of the, or last month or last couple of days, I should say, of the.
So your page is cut? Cut. Everyone in favor continuing that?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number seven, appointment of LIA Officer?
Well, I'd like to recommend to the board to appoint the superintendent of MSD of Wabash County as a local education officer, for a serving year with authority to file applications for federal funds on behalf of the school corporation.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Selection of newspapers for legal advertisement.
So by law, we are required to place legal advertisements in our county newspaper. I recommend that we officially approve the Wabash Plain Dealer, and just to make a note, our new editor, Will Carroll, is with us tonight, so.
Welcome.
So we need a motion for this.
Sorry.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of continual participation in WMAP and also Heartland Career Center cooperation.
So, not that the reason why they're here, but since two of the representatives are here, I recommend our continued participation in WMAP and Heartland Career Center to facilitate better accountability with the State Board of Council and Department of Education.
Second.
Everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The last item, ten, is approve the school board appointment of a non-voting member to the County Redevelopment Commission, which I've done that in the past. Still willing to do it, unless somebody wants to do it.
So I would.
It's not, it's not voting. Well worth your time.
So you're willing to do that?
Yeah.
Do we need to nominate you then, or we just?
Yeah. So let me, I'll just do officially, I recommend to approve the school board appointment of a non-voting member of the County Redevelopment Commission. Current member is Kevin Bowman, and he has agreed to do this again, so if you would like to nominate him?
Second.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I think that includes all the items for the organization?
Yes.
All right. So we'll adjourn this meeting and take a breath and begin the regular meeting. I'd like to call to order the regular school board meeting for January the 10th of the MSD of Wabash County School Board. We've done the Pledge of Allegiance. Future board meetings, if you notice there in the notes, on the 24th, we also have the Board of Finance meeting. We took it off tonight's agenda, moved it back one meeting. Also on the February the 14th and February the 28th, we'll have regular meetings. All of us are here at the Administration Building. Really no revisions to the agenda, except for, I think, an addition to HR and maybe a donation, I can't remember. Recognition. So we have $500 donation from Peerless Machine and Tool Corporation for Southwood Elementary Robotics. We have a donation of various school supplies from Bradley Harmon in memory of Kerry Harmon for all schools. Recommendation to approve a $1,000 donation from HAK Enterprises LLC for Southwood Elementary Robotics. Recommendation to approve $100 donation from Daniel and Bobby Scol and family for Southwood Elementary Robotics. Always appreciate how much the robotics programs are supported big time. Recommendation to approve the $50 donation from Michael and Patricia DeWort to assist students in need of lunch money, that'd go to Southwood Elementary. And recommendation to approve $56.70 donation from Box Tops for education for students at Southwood Elementary. We need a motion to approve those donations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Students, spot light, Micah and Caitlin.
He says Mike.
It does. It's a little disappointing.
That's not what I thought. This is not, I just noticed that right now.
Did you say Micah?
I thought that's, yes.
Sorry about that.
We'll get that changed.
I was answering Micah, I just went with her.
Here, we'll just put it up here, now you won't even see it.
Are you sure you are?
Don't tell his mother.
Yeah.
Come on in, come on in.
So, we wanted to, it was a great honor for the students, and actually the parents too, and everyone involved, for two of these recognitions, and so really thought it would be great for them to come in, spelling correctly, different things like that, but there was a couple of things I wanted to ask of them, so they can share a little bit about their journey, and can they see that, can they see them or not?
Well, they'll come here.
Okay, so, sorry, Malachi, if you could come on here, and almost, almost they see it right there, but just so we can see you on the, on the video for Facebook Live, just sitting right next to Dr. David.
Millions of, millions.
Well, one thing that I talked to you about, and I mentioned in my email, just to share a little bit about, you know, your journey as far as what did the schools or other experience really help you to be able to find out and actually be able to get this scholarship, the Ford Family Community Scholarship?
Yeah, for the schools, just the teachers' willingness to always be there, like when I'm there and I don't, not having a great day, they're, you couldn't, I could never tell when teachers maybe weren't having a great day, they're always really supportive, encouraged me to want to learn. And other experiences, my parents, I feel like if all, a lot of the kids have the same support system that my parents did, and still the discipline and stuff that I have, a lot of people would be as successful as, they're in the same position I am. Also, wanted to say something about my youth program, I think it's helped me grow as a person in general.
Very good. It's always good to hear from students, we don't get to hear it a lot, so that's great. And then just tell us a little bit about your future plans, I know some things might be still up in the air, but your ultimate goal.
Well, I'm still waiting to hear back from Purdue, that's supposed to be this Friday, but I haven't decided between Purdue or Roseholman, I'm wanting to study mechanical engineering at either one of the schools.
All right. Any questions from the board? I didn't tell them about, there might be other questions, but.
Did I read where you developed interest in the engineering from the STEM?
Yeah.
Junior high?
The fourth through sixth grade STEM class, that was what really blossomed.
That's great.
And this is a four-year tuition, all 20% paid, correct? So, that's fantastic, so.
I'll make your birthday.
Where your parents at?
I would every scholarship, wearing his new car.
That's in the five.
All right, let's give him a round. All right, and then also the Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship, Caitlin Rank, you want to go ahead and, it's really great that we have two of our MSD students that have accomplished this goal, so Caitlin, just tell us a little bit too about those experiences, whether at school, outside of school, that really helped you, that you believe that helped you receive the Lilly.
Well, since I was little, my parents pushed me to do really well in school, whether I hated it or not. Yeah, I really didn't like it then, but now I'm really, I'm really happy that they did, and if I'm doing poorly, that reflects back on them and on me, so I'm glad they always pushed me, and now it reflects well on our schools, or it reflects well on my church, or it reflects well on my family. We had some people at our church that actually helped me win the Lilly, and I know they were really proud, and they were a huge help, just everybody in our community appreciated me and helped me get that, my schools, different, different teachers have always helped me when I'm having a bad day, that were Malachi stuff, and, so yeah, it's a whole community effort to get one person a full scholarship, and it reflects on all of them.
Tell us a little bit, right before the meeting, we were talking to you a little bit, but you said you actually thought about the Lilly, how long ago?
Uh, since fourth grade. I've won a Lilly Scholarship since fourth grade, you can ask mom, you can ask some of my friends, they're like, oh, well, there's a big chance you probably won't get it, so, yeah.
All right. Tell us a little bit about your future plans, then.
I want to go to Iowa, but like, like I said, I'm waiting on an answer from Purdue, just to see what happens. But I'd like to go to Indiana West Williams for a new nurse.
Well, again, congratulations, and we will continue to talk to both of you, you still have another semester of regular high school, so make sure you keep working hard, so let's give her a round of applause. Because I do believe that you have to have a diploma to be able to go to college, so yeah, so it's not over with yet, so keep working hard.
I might mention that those scholarships, I don't know so much about the Ford, but about the Lilly, there's a lot of service goes into that, if you contribute to the community and stuff like that, so, thank you guys.
It's interesting, they're going to keep track of her on the Lilly, not necessarily the Ford, but on the Lilly, keep track of her for the next 10 years, just to see what her progress is and what she's attained, so. So not just your parents, other people too, a lot of people keeping eyes on you. Well, we have a couple of other recognitions, if you guys could stay for that, just to hear some other things, and I know that you guys, you still need to leave, Higgins?
Micah is covering Lilly's transportation.
Okay, all right. Okay, but you can leave at any time, we'll release some other recognitions at this time. You can go ahead with those, please. All right, and I will go ahead and have, let's go ahead and have Mr. Stauffer go ahead and share a little bit about some of the Southwood Elementary.
So, I share with you guys, usually on every Friday, we have a Knights newsletter for the elementary called Knights Tale, and we highlight all kinds of information throughout the week coming up, but we also highlight one boy and one girl from each grade level called Knights of the Week. So this week's, the teachers select those students, each grade level, gets together and they select their students that they want, and then they put the reason why in the newsletter, and I put that on the spreadsheet, I think they have access to it, where they can see the reason why, but the students of the week for the Knights, this week were Max Stance, Miles Shoemaker, Raines Sesums, Emalina Wilson, Callan Reed, Avery Cordell, Andrew Whirling, Mary Smith, Ryder Shendell, Callie Ellis, Nick O'Brien, and Natalie Hyland, Dominic Kane, and our last fifth grader was Destin Banks. So those students, they're doing some outstanding things with the school, and there's all different kinds of reasons they get selected by their teachers. Like I said, you can be a line, I don't want to spin all, read off, read off everybody's thing. We did want to recognize one staff member at the elementary, we'd like to recognize Mrs. Megan Wright for her excellent work at SES. I wonder if you guys know her, right?
No, not at all.
But anyway, Mrs. Wright consistently goes above and beyond to create a supportive and nurturing environment for her students. Her dedication to our special education program and commitment for helping students succeed is unmatched and is very inspiring. She, she is there all the time, and she works with our staff, I mean, I can't even tell you how hard she works, she puts in the hours and she's, and she means it, and she wants to see her students succeed, so we just wanted to give her some recognition for all that she does, because we do appreciate her hard work and her dedication to our students and our staff, because she helps out our staff with the students quite a bit, so.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Moore, you have some things to share?
Sure, I do. I know, if you've heard, that the months of November and December really hit schools and the community hard with the flu and all kinds of variations of, I'm just going to go with iciness, but we have some amazing subs that we can get ahold of first thing in the morning, and we say, you know, I've got a staff member that can't come today because they're sick, I'll be there, and it's just amazing that we have, you know, people in our community that want to come in to the successful of the little ones, and I hope I'm not forgetting anyone, but Kim Truska, Kathy Lowry, Nancy Jo Hamel, Angie Bear, James Ely, Jennifer Nessler, Katie Johnson, and Marty Hooper are just amazing individuals that will get right in there and don't hesitate when they're available to say yes. We also are welcoming two student teachers this semester to Metro More. James Ely, so we're losing him as a sub, but gaining him as a teacher, he is completing his Masters of Art in Teaching through WGU, and will work with Amy Sterling. And we also have Ms. Renee Soul, and she's working on her bachelor's degree in elementary education and special education, and she is working through Huntington University, and she's working alongside Mary Donaldson and Bailey Chant, so we're excited to have them join us and welcome them into our amazing field. Just as a side note for the district, our registration is now open and live, and we're just getting kids after kids for our Minds in Action programming. As of tonight, we have 72 KDA students registered for those three different experiences, so there's, Laura Langardle has put together on our website just a wealth of information to make that process easy for parents to get their kids signed up, and we are extending that invitation to kids in our community as well, so.
Thank you very much. And I will go ahead and share what the other principals have shared on our spreadsheet, and actually, Mr. Stauffer, just to let you know, the board does not have necessarily that, because we typically just read it and then we actually put it anyway, so I just want to make sure I clarified that. So I will start with Southwood, Mr. McDaniel, the boys' basketball team received an exemplary behavior report from referee Scott Geist after the performance of the basketball game versus Manchester on Friday, December 16th. The report reads, "The game was fun, referee, as both coaches were professional on the sideline in teams, although rivals were competitors throughout, but not overly physical. Opposing players would help athletes up after a fall, and captains were respectful when asking for clarification on calls they did not understand." I like how he put that, "understand." All of the referee team, all of the referee team is appreciative. Also, the Southwood community would like to recognize the momentous accomplishment of Caitlin Rank, I'll read this, even though we've already done that, "This year's recipient of the Lilly Endowment Scholarship, Ms. Rank is an excellent student, athlete, and athlete, and represents Southwood very well. We have no doubt that she will continue to excel and be successful on whatever path she chooses in her future, because she will be watched by the Lilly people for 10 years." No data. "Southwood would like to also recognize the efforts of a 10th grade student, Luke Carrying. Luke recently entered the Voice of America essay contest through the Veterans of Foreign Wars. His essay entitled 'The Importance of a Veteran' won first prize at district. Luke received a medal, certificate, and $100 prize for his efforts. Way to go, Luke." "Southwood Junior and Senior High School would like to recognize the efforts of Mrs. Farley in her advanced placement English class. As part of the Wabash Reach Out Program, each student in the class created 50 Christmas cards for residents of Wabash County Nursing Homes. What incredible act of kindness, thank you, Mrs. Farley and students, for a wonderful gesture of Christmas kindness." And then from Mr. Martin at Shark Creek, Shark Creek wishes to thank the community for supporting the K Kids Food Collection. Over 2,000 items were donated to the Fish Food Bank just prior to Christmas. When you think about 2,000 items cans, that's also a lot of weight, it'd be interesting to know how much all that weighed when you went into the school. Continuing on here, Norfield, a huge congratulations to Norfield Senior Malachi Higgins for being named the 2023 Ford Family Community Scholarship recipient. The scholarship provides a four-year full tuition scholarship to any Indiana college or university of his choice, and is only given to one graduate senior in Wabash County each year. We know Malachi is playing on some sort of engineering, and has a couple of colleges in mind. Malachi is an awesome choice, and he has always represented his school and his family very well. We wish Malachi the best as he prepares for his next steps at Norfield High School. Also, Norfield, thank you, Norfield Boys Basketball Team for thanking of others at Christmas time, they traveled to what was Miller's Merry Manor, now called the Waters of Wabash, to celebrate and give Christmas cheer. They delivered 19 Christmas wreaths to those who do not receive many visitors over the holiday season. The kids even took it upon themselves to sing a few carols as they walked the hallways. Thanks for you, you, thank you for your positive representation of your team, school, and for thanking of others during the Christmas season. I wonder if they're going to join choir now? Also, Norfield has an athlete who was recognized at the Wabash County Basketball Tournament that was held over Christmas break. Congratulations to Dylan Thomason from Boys and Ella Baker Girls for being named to the All-County Team and to tie limbing to being presented the Bill Robey Award for JV. Also, congratulations to Norfield Lady Wrestlers Ella Gale and Ella France, both of them qualified for the girls' state wrestling finals in Mooresville this Friday. We wish them the best of luck at state on Friday. And that was Mr. Stauffer's. Southwood put another one here, too, the Southwood community would like to recommend efforts of the boys' basketball team for the recent Friday night win over the Apaches. On December 28th, the boys' team lost to Wabash by 30 points. On Friday, January 6th, our guys fought hard and beat the Apaches by 11, an exciting county tournament rematch. Way to go Knights. You know, it's always good to have a lot of these, but I'm going to have some water sometimes too. The Southwood community would like to express a sincere thank you to Mike Doc Emrick, and I will read all of this, but I'll let you know there's going to be a really nice social media post about this also, and there'll be some more information, so I'll start over again. The Southwood community would like to express a sincere thank you to Mike Doc Emrick. Doc Emrick, Southwood graduate, was a famous play-by-play hockey announcer for NBC Sports, covering NHL games, United States and Canada until his retirement in 2020. Doc Emrick was a recipient of eight Emmy Awards for his play-by-play broadcasting. On Friday, January 6th, Doc Emrick made a surprise visit to Southwood and presented his 2014 Emmy to the school. Doc felt it fitting to give the 2014 Doc felt it fitting to give the 2014 Emmy because that marked the fiftieth anniversary of his graduation from Southwood High School. The Emmy will soon be displayed at Southwood High School. Thank you, Doc Emrick. So really, really cool. And I would imagine that our new Wabash Plain Dealer editor will do a great piece of that.
I interviewed him this morning.
Oh, you already did? Okay, all right. We talked about that. Southwood would like to congratulate the following athletes for being named to the All-County Team. The performance at their recent holiday tournament in Manchester, Leah Sweet, Ella Hopper, and Cole Weiner. Way to go Knights. Southwood would like to recognize Erin Lehner, 2020 Southwood graduate, for making the dean's list for the fall semester at IU Bloomington. Erin and her daughter Annie and Brent Lehner. Way to go, Erin. And that was Metro North. And this is one, I believe, I'll go ahead and read it, but no, this is more already dead, so thank you. All right, that's all I have for those. And then we'll be doing the spotlight. Can you just go right into the spotlight? Well, after kind of a long pause of our staff spotlight, we paused because of COVID. And so we are actually then starting up the second semester. So this time it's a little bit different. In the past, we had anyone in the school district, in other words, other staff members and any, any community members, anyone could actually nominate a staff member. But we kind of changed it a little bit this time that it's only parents and not necessarily staff nominating other staff members. And so I'm gonna go ahead and let Mrs. Moore sit down because she, one time she talked about that, but I'll let her stay there if that's all right, if you still wanna do that. Because unfortunately, the two parents that nominated her and she was selected to be the spotlight, they were unable to come. One said that she was unable to come at the very beginning, which is understandable. The other one actually got ill and so she did not want to spread any germs to any of us. And so I'm just gonna share that spotlight. And first of all, this is from parent Jamie Cright. And I'll read this. Mrs. Moore is always outside almost every morning, rain, snow, and shine, helping parents get their children to school. I've seen her sitting on the sidewalk with an upset child, comforting them, and just gets down to their level literally. I absolutely love it. She shows so much compassion for the students. As a parent of two, one child graduated and I never witnessed this with my first child. It was a different school system, but I feel it makes a huge difference to me as a parent and to my youngest child currently at Metro North Elementary. I am very grateful. So Mrs. Moore, we know that you work hard on doing all those things and so she wanted to spotlight you on that, so congratulations. And we have a number two though. Number two, spotlight from great-grandma Deborah Casey. She's the one that was gonna be here and then unfortunately got ill, so was not able to come. She is so sweet, not Deborah, that Mrs. Moore, she might be Deborah. Yeah, she's probably sweet too. I don't know her very well. I just talked to her on the phone. But Mrs. Moore, she is so sweet and very helpful. If you have a question, she always has the answer or finds out. She is a very caring person and loves all the students. And I will tell you too, and I know it's not comfortable for Mrs. Moore to hear all those things in front of people and things like that, but that's just the way it is. That we, that we do do this and we love to do that. But she also wrote a whole other piece and I'm not gonna read it all, but she wanted to share that, you know, she, she, she said, "I hate to have to inform you that I will not be able to be here," but she just talks about all the things that you've done with their, with their little Norse that had a hard time maybe getting registered and getting all into the program. You just really, really worked it out. You know, she was heartbroken at first thinking it wasn't gonna happen, but you did a lot of different things. Some of the things that you do as far as the different grants and all those different things actually help out. And so she was super nice through the whole process. She stayed in touch through it all. I greatly appreciate everything she's done for us. She went beyond and above her duties. Thank you and God bless. So I think that's great to hear that from, from her. And so one thing that we do want to say is that First Farmers National Bank, or First Farmers, First Farmers and Trust Bank, they actually have been our sponsor for several years now and they continue to be our sponsor. So we're doing something a little bit different. We've done a lot of different things. The last thing we did is a blanket, which is kind of nice too, but MSDWC is gonna start a store. And that store is gonna be an online store. There's gonna be logos of all the schools and different things like that. And basically, the spotlight winner, in this case, Mrs. Moore, will be, will get a voucher. And those vouchers each time will be forty dollars to go on the store and purchase anything from there.
I'm the first shopper.
You're the first. It doesn't, it won't.
There's no shoes of it.
It won't officially, it won't officially open until the middle of February, but you will be getting a voucher to be able to use it. And I will let you know though, there is an expiration date. And I think we will put that, I think it's what I told them, July one or July thirty-first. So probably, probably be the day after you get it. So anyway, let's give Mrs. Moore a round of applause. Here's your voucher right here. So we'll get that to you. Like, don't let me forget. We will. All right. And so any of our guests that need to leave, wanna leave, you can leave or you can stay for the whole meeting. We'll be done by ten, guaranteed, so. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Especially on the card.
Do we have any public comment for agenda items only? If not, I'll take a motion to approve minutes from prior meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Approval of financial reports. Let's begin with claims, questions on claims, Chris. I noticed we have the big payoffs there on.
Your bonds.
On the bonds, two bonds.
Yeah, and those will be then completely paid off, so then we just have the one bond remaining for the rest of this calendar year.
Software fees always kind of like.
They are.
Make you take a second breath.
That was a three, that was a three-year payment, so.
I move to accept claim.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll eleven and twelve, since we have two of them here, we'll take a motion to approve both of those together.
Yeah, there's nothing special. That payroll eleven, which is a December fifteenth payday. The big difference there is the fact that that's when we paid out our teacher appreciation grant dollars that we received from the state. So that's why you see such a larger payout there. And then the last payroll of the calendar year, which would have been the payroll twelve for December twenty-ninth, that one is more of your standard payroll.
I move to accept payroll.
Let's look at that. All in favor of approving payrolls eleven and twelve?
Aye.
Financial summaries, if you wanna work it through that, Chris, and tell us.
Yeah, did you do anything when they were like, okay, so that's payroll. All right, so end of the month of December balances, which actually equates to our end of the year balances. Just kind of outlines where we're at with that. A couple of things to focus on. Obviously, we focus on our education operation funds. At the end of the calendar year, our education fund balance sits at nine point three million and our operation fund balance sits at seven million. And so that's good. Those things are obviously trending in the right direction and are healthy for the end of the year. And so you can see all of that said and done, total amount of cash at the end of 2022 sits roughly at twenty million dollars. And obviously, those come from all kinds of different funds. And, you know, every fund has its own special rules and regulations because some of them are state funds, some of them are federal funds, some of them are local funds. So they just all have their different, like I said, set of rules and, and things that you can only buy out of and so forth. So that's where we sit right now at the end of 2022. This next slide represents our education fund cash flow. And so I, obviously, this is all the actuals. So Jeff, just so you are aware, once a month, we will go over cash flow. And obviously, starting in January, we'll build out, I'll build out a model. And then that will kind of show how our cash will potentially flow throughout the year. Give us estimates as we build budgets and, you know, we anticipate things like raises and additional revenues and those types of things. You can kind of see how the, the cash moves in and out of the education fund. What, what are some of those expenses? What are some of those revenue streams and so forth? And I'm happy to answer any questions as, you know, we go throughout the year when we're looking at that because you can see different variations from time to time, just based off of, you know, anything that changes throughout the year or needs arise or, or whatever. And so I've laid out three years of cash flow, so you can take a look at that. A lot of this information is just more for your review, so I'm not gonna go over everything. But there's three years laid out of cash flow going back to 2020. So you can do there. And then I also use a software program that helps me with my budgeting, especially when it comes to current budget and expected or forecasted budget. And so this just lays out some of those things that I look at, but this lays it out for the entire year. So I look at these things from month to month, but this lays out the entire year. So this shows you kind of what our examples of some of our trends have been versus our actuals. And so maybe compared to what our, you know, the budget that we built and set forth and what the actuals were for each of those months up through the entire year. So that's a document you can take a look at. Next page, Mr. Q. Paper. This shows you again that flow of cash and how, you can kind of see how it moves from the bar chart. But that shows you where we started at the beginning of the year and where we ended at the end of the year, at that nine point three. And then this shows you kind of a dashboard. This dashboard represents revenues. So it kind of lays out what our main revenue sources were for the year in that one box. And then you can see kind of how that matches with what happened last year versus the budget that we built out or anticipated in revenues for this year. And you can kind of see that, how that compares from local dollars, state dollars, federal dollars, et cetera. So that's a dashboard that I look at. Next page. This lays out your revenues in comparisons from year to year, where you can look at from month to date from year to year. So you can compare, you know, June's from 2020 and June's from 2021 and June's from 2022 and see how those all compare from each year. Kind of shows from our budget for that year, some of those favorable expenses, things that maybe we didn't really anticipate getting some extra revenue in, but we did. So that type of stuff. Next document then represents the same thing. Dashboard for expenditures, so that you can see your top expenditures. And again, you can see what those are and how they compare from last year to this current year. And then it gives you the same thing here from your expenditures and showing, you know, where we may have had some increases in expenditures. And you can kind of see that there when you're talking about your expenses. Primarily, that's coming from your salaries and benefits, where we increased, you know, salaries over the last year and so forth. So you can see where that, that shows up. And then the last one just kind of gives you a detailed example or detailed explanation of where those, some of those variances are caused by. You can look over that and read that on your own time, but it'll kind of show you like it said there for expenditures for the current year period salaries increased seven point seven percent over the prior period, year period. So shows that we had a pretty decent increase in salaries over the last, last year for our staff. And so throw that out there for you guys to look at your own time and happy to get into answering any questions at another time. This one lays out operations in the same way. So this is the operational fund cash flow. And that shows you those expenses and revenues over the past three years. And then again, you can look at the performance and how those, how that cash moved. And so like, for example, if you go to the next slide, you can see, Jeff, there's big dips in your operations fund, okay? And the reason for those dips is that the main revenue source for our operation comes from our local tax revenue. And so operating taxes are collected and then distributed to entities in June and December. And so you can see, you know, we're not getting much cash in from January to June, but then there's a big increase there because we received our tax dollars. And then it goes down again because there's no, not much revenue coming in during those time periods. And then again, at the end of the year in December, revenue increased, okay? So I don't need to go through those. Same thing, revenue dashboards and expenditure dashboards for the operation fund. Last one here is transfers. So again, Mr. Porter, just so you understand that our operational fund, like we mentioned, comes strictly from our local tax revenues. The revenues that we receive in our operation fund do not cover all of our expenses in our operational fund. So therefore, the state allows school districts to transfer money from their education fund to their operation fund to cover those expenses. And so by law, you are not allowed to transfer more than fifteen percent of your education fund revenue into your operation fund account. So I manage that and keep an eye on that from month to month to make sure that we aren't meeting that fifteen percent. So for this calendar year, our total revenue that we transferred over in the operation fund was eleven point six percent. That equated to two million dollars of money that was transferred from education fund to operation fund to cover those expenses and needs that isn't completely covered by our tax revenue. Okay? And so that shows you that example. We transfer eleven point six percent. But if you go to the next slide, the next slide shows you if we wanted to cover all of the expenses that we needed to cover out of operations, we would have had to cover, we'd have to transfer thirteen point three percent of that money.
Out of the education.
Out of the education fund to cover those expenses.
And part of that is from the two, two thousand nineteen change and how they did their fund balances. And so basically, there were funds that used to be in, what there was a general fund, it was a Howard Education Fund, that had been moved to the operation fund. So that's why you'd have to transfer that.
And our operation fund is healthy, so didn't feel a need to transfer up all of it or more. Like you, you can transfer up to fifteen percent, but we want to make sure that we are still transferring enough so that we're not relying solely on our operation fund to cover those costs because we need other things to use that money for, like building projects and some other type of stuff that may come up in the future. So the next page just kind of breaks it out all by account number. And then this last document shows how that compares to the previous year. So last year, we did twelve percent of transfers, which equated to one point nine million dollars. This year, we did two million dollars, which actually lowered, lowered that percentage. You think it would increase it because we put more money into it, but revenues increased as well in our education fund. So I think that is, I guess, my financial summary. Like Kevin mentioned, we are gonna move our Board of Finance meeting to our next board meeting. And I'll have a little bit more of a summary of. and I'll have a little bit more of a summary of, uh, this as in comparison to our upcoming twenty twenty-three budget.
Couple of things I always look at, Chris, is how well you did on your projections and you did a little well, yeah. You're not perfect.
Not perfect. Kind of just eats away at me, but we get it pretty close. And like I said, some of that's just kind of knowing how things move and flow, uh, throughout the year. Uh, the financial software helps, uh, the forecasting is, I think, really important, um, to really being able to look out in the future so that we can make those assumptions to, you know, possible raises, upcoming expenditures that we know we're going to need to have in the future. Uh, those type of things, I think, have really helped us, uh, with some of that, especially with our budget for the current year, so.
One of the other things I look at is your ending account balances growth, did it grow as much as it did in the previous year? And it's very positive, what it grew this last year in twenty twenty-two, in the prior year or two, so that's encouraging. Having said that, though, I want to reiterate that we need to be vigilant in coming from the agriculture sector, we know how fast things can get away from the person, so. I'm done preaching. Move on to HR report, if you have that in front of you. If I mispronounce names, please correct, I want to give them correctly. Resignation, we have Jeremy Elsie, Alex Miracle, um, resigning. Jeremy's paraprofessional and Alex is paraprofessional and bus driver. Under appointment, Jeremy's going to be rehired as a paraprofessional only at Southwood High School, not at Shark Creek. We also have under appointment, Patsy Arwood, bus driver in South, Nate Byler, seventh grade, was basketball, Carrie Q, uh, paraprofessional at Shark Creek. And then leave, we have number one forty-nine, which begins in February, it's the end of this school year. Kevin, anyone else mind, or we just? Motion approved, the HR.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Hartley Mathieu.
I didn't have a move next, in the year.
Who prescindent's report, or do you want me to?
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to be like.
Yeah.
Craig.
Okay. Well, as we've done the last couple, two or three years, um, just a little review. We don't always like to look backwards, but there's a lot of positive that happened. And so, uh, like to just put things together. What I do is, I might look at our, um, board minutes, I look at some of the things that I, um, look at board minutes, I look at the recognitions and just put something together. And next year, um, I have talked with, uh, Laura Langy-Bardles about doing something different, uh, maybe a video or something. That might be a little more entertaining than me just talking about some of these. And so we're, we're thinking about how we're going to do this next year, but it is neat to, just to go through. So in January, uh, of course, one of the neat things that happened is that you guys were presented with a framed state championship medal and picture from the Northfield softball team that won the state championship. Um, also, we had students that, uh, Southwood students that had all-state honors choir. Basically, the intercom system, uh, the grant that Dr. Kuhn wrote, uh, was, uh, actually integrated into all the schools, and that was three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar grant, so, you know, that's a big deal. And so we'll continue on in February then, and I apologize if I missed something, uh, but I did give this to a lot of different people to see if they wanted to add anything, but we had a wrestler that went to, the Northfield wrestler went to semi-state. Uh, we were up on our ADM from spring, or from fall to spring, seventy-four students, which was great. Uh, we had students who were Symphony Color State finalists, um, and also, um, Mrs. Moore wrote, uh, grants. Um, her grants actually totaled a little bit more than, uh, Dr. Kuhn's, uh, seven hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars, so. And some of them are competitive, some of them aren't necessarily, but you have to write them, and there's a, you know, it takes a lot to do that with all the other things that are going on, so that was really neat. Um, in March, a lot of things, uh, bumped up there, robotic teams participating in state finals, we'll talk about that a little later, too. Academic correction, recognition, the honors banquet that you guys attend, uh, Mr. Drake, um, heads all that up. Also, Southwood basketball team won their sectional, and that was third consecutive. Uh, Indiana State House Youth Art, um, Month Honorable Mention, um, I think. Mrs. Moore might have gone down to one of those, I don't know which one it was, but Indiana State, uh, library letters about authors contests, level three award, the spring banner winners, lots of those. Uh, at Northfield, Indiana High School Wrestling Coaches Association Junior Academic All-State, uh, Honorable Mention. Also, Southwood Region Five Football Junior Class All-State Team, FFA, there's a lot of accomplishments going on there. Uh, Northfield Senior Trip, Boston, so the reason why that's a highlight, because there for a while, we didn't get to go to different trips, but we, they went to Boston. And then, of course, um, a big thing that, that we, you approved, uh, was for Southwood Elementary sixth graders to be transferred then. So Mr. Stoffer never got to, uh, experience the sixth grader, so. Um, also then, April, we had two schools that were, uh, recognized as family-friendly schools. Maybe three, three, all North schools were at that time, yes. Uh, paths to quality three, uh, there's a couple of times that that happened. Uh, Mrs. Moore is in charge of the, uh, umbrella of all the, the preschool, and so there's a lot of work that, to be able to be level three and continue with that. Uh, Indiana Landmark Center, uh, the student art competition award winner, that was great. Vincent's University Writing Contest, so you can see a lot of the teachers, a lot of things going on as far as, uh, what they're doing. Uh, then the Southwood, uh, seniors went to Gatlinburg, and then, of course, uh, there were raises that were given, again, twenty-two, twenty-three classified, admin raises. In May, uh, we had some, you know, two of our students, uh, in MSD took on the two winning places or the top two winning places of Walbush County Initiative within pitch con, uh, competition. Uh, US News World Report, Southwood again earned a high national ranking. Uh, Southwood High School Baseball Crossed Indiana Player of the Week, uh, the TRC Mental Attitude Awards and Sky Athlete and Distinguished Award, Honor Awards. Uh, Northfield and Shark Creek Robotic Teams went to Vex World Robotics in Dallas, Texas. The ten oh three flexibility resolution approved for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, calendar year. That was a, a pretty big deal, though, as far as how we're doing things and be able to have more professional development. Uh, maybe not more professional development, but, uh, being able to, uh, just concentrate that on, on those days that we have those. Hearings and resolutions for the referendum were done during that time. We had students go into the track regionals of both high schools. Uh, we also had, Southwood had the, a track and field academic all-state honorable mention. There were four of the students, uh, or athletes, uh, Southwood Track and Field Individual Sectional Champions, there were three of them. And then there was a Southwood, uh, Track and Field Girls Eight Hundred Sectional Champion, set a school record of Southwood. Um, in June, we start slowing down a little bit because we're not in school except for whites, but graduations of the bridge, we have, uh, bridge, um, graduation, Northfield and Southwood, summer school minds in action, addition, uh, and additional support for students. We went to the La Grille Parade, it's always fun to go to parades. Um, Teacher of the Year at Elementary was Mary Donaldson this year, Secretary is Shelley Faust. Um, and Staff of the Year, then Amanda Lyons. And then the referendum signatures delivered to the county clerk, which is kind of a big deal, too. Uh, then in July, uh, went to the Four H Fair, again, that's always fun. Uh, public question approved by the county election board to go to the DLGF, I had to say it, misleading. Um, and then we'll go on to August twenty twenty-two, uh, we started school, uh, we had new administrators. Uh, Casey Stoffler, of course, principal at Southwood Elementary, Carrie Johnson, Assistant Principal of Southwood High School, and Chris Osewald as Athletic Director at Northfield High School. And then September, we were up actually a hundred and fourteen point five students on the ADM. All seventh grade students, uh, that's always a fun trip that they, on Walbush River Defenders, Walbush River Wild Field Trip. Uh, e-learning resumes, and we had, uh, Dr. Adam Drummond that came to us, um, and we used, yeah. And then Founder's Day Parade, we attended that, Rowan Parade, uh, we had Nor, Northfield Girls, uh, played in the regional. Uh, the PTQ rating, uh, because of different, uh, schools allows funding for parents like On My Way Pre-K and CCDF vouchers, was also at level three again, uh, variance meeting and approval, um, and then public meetings, 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 and events, 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 a lot of things going on in September. October, max preps, athletes of the week nomination student, uh, in all-state band choir, walking to my future event. Northfield advanced four girls to the regional, Northfield now has a girls wrestling team. Southwood, uh, football, share of the TRC Conference Championship, uh, great game at the end to make that happen. Teacher contract twenty-one, twenty-three approved, one million, uh, plus in raises over the two-plus years of contract. Southwood Girls Volleyball playing in semi-state, uh, Northfield Boys and Girls, uh, ran a regional. Uh, Southwood Boy ran a regional, and Southwood Cross Country Academic Hall Star, honorable mention, there was one student there. November, Winter Street Banner Contest, we became failed referendum partners with four other neighboring school corporations who also made an attempt, and Southwood All-State Honor Band. And then finally, December, uh, Coach Snyder, um, in the past five years, the coach, uh, had a forty-five and twelve record. In the last ten years, he had a mark of eighty-seven thirty. Another teacher, uh, Rita Markstella, recognized by Higher Learning Commission to be able to teach dual credit. And then, of course, we had Caitlin Rank, and, it's in here right this time, Malika Headets, for the two, uh, different scholarships. And those are big deals, so. And I know I probably didn't get everything, um, and you don't want to hit everything necessarily, but you want to hear, feel those high-level things that, that students or staff are doing, so, uh, it's just really great to see what happened. And just a couple of other things, the financial help, or health, uh, donations, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Bowman, you always talk about this, uh, but over the year, it took all those donations, and it was four hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ten cents. So that's, that's great, those are donations for a lot of community people, or things like that. Um, of course, the education fund, operations fund, ready-to-date fund, all healthy. And then I, I included one more time, a one million dollar extra in salaries over the two-year contract period for teachers. And just a reminder of our, a purpose of a strategic plan to position MSD of Walbush as a, a preeminent district of educational opportunity or programming. So, of course, we have the four different, uh, priorities in. So MSD provides a strong product determined by our surveys and the results. Our goal is to continue to strengthen MSDWC amidst a challenge, a changing environment, and sustain it for many years to come. And so twenty twenty-three, here we go. We've already started, obviously.
We've been waiting until tonight.
Yeah. Happy New Year. No, it is great, though, just to go back and look at all the things that have happened, and, um, like I said, we'll try to do something maybe a little more engaging, more fun, uh, next year with some kind of a video or something like that. But it's good to, it is good, though, to go back and review and look at all the different notes and different things that have happened and putting in a kind of calendar format, so, kind of, I don't know, anybody else will, I'm sure, so, but.
Well, sitting here, you realize how many people are involved in making that happen.
Oh, gosh.
And it's not a good people in the district, I'm proud. We have four items for new business. First one is recommendation to approve the local income tax distribution resolution, any clarification?
Yeah, so this is, we do this every year, uh, we do receive local income tax dollars, uh, from the county, and so we just have to determine where those dollars go. Typically, we put them back in any of those funds that, uh, generate any tax levies. So we put those in our operations and education fund balance, and we, or not education, operation and debt service funds. And we just, uh, divide that based off of the, uh, percent distribution of our tax rate and how much of it is operation fund and how much of that is debt service. So I just recommend that we continue that, uh, process, and that's just the resolution that does that.
I move to approve the resolution. Second. Aye.
Item two, recommendation to distribute the twenty twenty-three transfers from the education fund to operations fund.
So we have to have board approval for any, uh, transfers that we make from education to operations fund. We do monthly transfers, and we've always set kind of a cap limit. And so the recommendation is to transfer not more than a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a month. We probably won't be transferring that much, but that gives us a little bit of cushion in case we would need to. Uh, and that would go throughout the year. If we ever needed to transfer more than a hundred and ninety-five thousand, then I would have to come back to the board and, uh, ask for another resolution, uh, to increase that amount.
Motion.
A move. Second.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item three, recommendation to approve resolution authorizing treasurer to pay claims.
So we have two board meetings a month, but there are months that we don't always have a board meeting because of a cancellation or whatever reason, uh, but we still need to be able to pay our bills and the family here so that we don't have late payments or anything like that. So this is just a resolution that would allow us to pay, make those payments, uh, whereas you still would see those claims and approve those claims at the following board meeting.
So.
Second. Motion is second on item three, all favor. Post. Item four, with the recommendation to reappoint Jonathan Fisher to the Rowan Library Board of Trustees for a term ending January twenty twenty-seven, five years, or four years ago.
So.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, no unfinished business. Fortunately, no board policies, anything from the public? Anybody from the board that has any items?
Pleasure to see the point you're here.
Any customer for the new board member to have a five-minute speech?
Well, that's what we give them as tests, this is a quiz.
This is the test time.
What's M S B stand for? All right, teasing Jeff, I'm glad to have you here. If not, we're adjourned.